It's being six o'clock. I'm calling to order the Select Board meeting of June 16th, 2025. If you'd all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting is being telecast live by Chelmsford Telemedia and being recorded for later viewing by the public. We do have Jeff Hardy. We do have Jeff Hardy on Zoom, is that right? We do have one of our members on Zoom tonight. And let's see, the first thing on our agenda tonight is our discussion with the town's state legislative delegation to discuss legislative priorities.
They're not on yet, so move on.
They're not online yet?
So just move on to the next.
Okay, so maybe we will go ahead and do our public service announcements?
Sure, sure. I will, I'll read this first one and then I'll invite Evelyn up to speak to it. So the first announcement we have tonight is for the Arts and Technology Education Fund Grant Awards. And with that, I'll introduce Evelyn Thoren to come up and speak to that as she does yearly for us.
I'm Evelyn Thoren. I'm the Chair of the Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee. And as usual, over the past 29 years, we've appeared before the Select Board to give out our awards. The applications become available in January. They're online with the town and they're also online and sent out by email to all the staff of the Chelmsford Public Schools. The deadline is March 31st of every year. And then again, we will meet in April and May, make our decisions. Sometimes we have interviews if we have any questions. And we streamlined it a lot during COVID so that we wouldn't be getting together. And a lot of people, you know, thought that was great. But we still will do that. We didn't have to do that this year. And so we had a few applications this year. We only have one award this year. We're planning on having further discussion, so that you're aware of it, of changing part of the bylaw to try to make it a little bit more available for those that would like to apply. Right now, it's very restricted so that the part of the bylaw where it says the applications are available in January and the deadline is March 31st and the funds for the following academic school year. And so some of the discussion at the last meeting was to change that, to have maybe two awards per year in, and the money given in that year. So if they needed it and they saw that there was a need for it, where sometimes in the future, if we wanted to give it to, say, one of the, one of the clubs, they may not have the same advisor. And we want to make sure that we have our program summary sheets come forward. That is the way that the person that has accepted the award and the money is accountable, not only to us as a committee, but accountable to those that have donated or to the taxpayers of Chelmsford, that this is how their money was spent. So we wanted to make sure that they did that. And the money is available through the line item in the Chelmsford Public School Department. And that way then it runs through that and any items being purchased become the property of the Chelmsford Public Schools. And that was our way to get around trying to have a 1099 and then maybe causing some other difficulties with our staff because they would have to have it as income in a given school year. So we are a nine-member board. We have Kirk Marshall, Carrie, Miko, Teresa Evans. Obviously, we have Jay Lang because by statute, that is the superintendent or his designee. So a lot of times, Dr. Linda Hirsch will show up. I'm on it. I have been on it since the beginning. So has Beverly Barrett. So there's only two original members still remaining on this committee. Hannah Barber, Elizabeth Hazel, and Candy Chase. So everybody is very enthusiastic. Everybody shows up. If they can't, they want to zoom in. They want to make sure that they're part of everything. So it's very nice to have active members on a committee. So without going into more detail, because I think some of you know that if I get a mic, I can keep talking for a long time. The award this year that you have seen in front of you is Mary Ellen Forte. It's an award for $370 for Fostering Fine Motor Fun. So I'd like to call her up. I'd like her to explain, since we only have one this year, to explain what this is and other comments because she has received the award several times in the past. So I'll turn that over to you, Mary.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to the ATEF grant and for all the people that donate. It has made such a great difference. I'm a teacher at the Integrated Preschool. And my goodness, we have a lot of supplies and things through the district, but the special things that we've been able to do through these grants, and it's not a ton of money, but it's enough to make a big difference. We have built a sensory play area in, in one area of my classroom. I have an extra large classroom. And so it's a place where students with and without disabilities come together. Lots of the materials are expensive. One, one year I applied to this grant and I received a projector which is able to put light onto the wall. So the children build blocks, they make shadows. And it's a place where kids who are on the spectrum, who are nonverbal, who have sensory difficulties, can come and be comfortable. They have, they come every day. Where kids who don't have disabilities love to go and play with them. And, and all the kids are learning through this type of play. This year, the, the title was Fostering Fine Motor Fun, but we're purchasing some special lighting, lighting up blocks that they can build with. And it's very sensory friendly. And it's just, just a wonderful, great opportunity for all the kids to play and work together. So, so just thank you to the committee and to all the people who donate to this. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thank you again, because if it wasn't for the original Select Board, the Board of Selectmen, we, they would forward that warrant article in 1996. We wouldn't be able to do that. And you also were able to experience some of her excitement about that. And when we had individual interviews, that was the same across the board, no matter who came in. They're very excited about teaching, about children learning, and about making sure that they have as much as they can in supplies and things to support the curriculum. So thank you again. We'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, Representative Arciero and Representative Cataldo are on Zoom at this point.
Okay, so maybe we can hold, can we hold the rest of the public service announcements? Since we have kind of a timeline with them. Okay. So, so we have some, hi, our representatives. Representative, hi, how are you?
Sorry not to be there in person today. Had a little crazy scheduling thing. So happy to be here virtually.
Good evening, everyone. Great to join you.
Evening.
Good evening. And we're just, Mr. Elliott is gonna show up.
Representative Elliott said he should be arriving in about five or seven minutes or so, but we should start without him.
Okay.
Well, good to see everybody. Sorry to be virtual, like I said, but we're in the midst of the budget season right now. We have about a $62 billion proposed budget. And by our Constitution, I know there's a few new members of the board, welcome. There's a constitutional obligation to have a balanced budget every year. So just to sort of take you through where things started in, in January, and the first House One and House Two was filed by the governor, was sort of the starting point of the budget discussion. In April, the House proposed our version of the budget, and then had our debates and passed a $62 billion budget. And the Senate had their debate and their version of the same budget. And now we're in something called the Conference Committee. So there's three members of the House and the Senate that are sort of reconciling the differences in the bill. To have a Conference Committee proposed budget to come to the floor, this, we anticipate in the next few weeks to put forward in the governor's desk. And that will be the process of vetoes, if there is any, and to get, you know, this bill done by, by August 1st is our deadline. And so a couple of things I think were written to Representative and I to discuss today. First, we're three for three on our earmarks that were asked for the, to the town of Chelmsford, including $25,000 for the Chelmsford Council on Aging, $25,000, I'll let, actually Representative Cataldo talk a little bit about his earmark, but then also $50,000 to reduce and eliminate the species at Freeman Lake, which is Representative Elliott. And so we're very happy to get those budget items that were discussed and asked for by the board into the, into the House budget. And we anticipate, you know, by August 1st, around that time, that those will hold serve and be available. We have a few other things, too. Today, the Budget Writers Chair, Michael Witz, in the House, as well as Chair and Senator Roderick's, came to agreement on the closeout bill. And that's a supplemental budget that was ending last year's fiscal year. And part of that also was the surtax money, or so-called millionaire's tax. And so this number is about $1.3 billion. And remember, both of the monies that, that are collected from the surtax that was passed by the voters and ratified by the members of the House and the Senate, that money will go specifically earmarked to transportation and education. And so we have that vote coming up this Wednesday would be the, the sort of Conference Committee vote on the closeout bill using that money. And just so you know, too, I know there's been some discussion about the millionaire's tax. It's actually performed better than anticipated. So we, we end on the closeout bill of $1.3 billion in those two earmarked subject areas. And then the monies for the millionaire's tax in this fiscal year, too, were, will be used for transportation and education pieces in this fiscal year 26 budget. But also I'd like to add that part of the supplemental budget, one was, I think, very important for our area, was the Regional Transit Authorities with $73 million. And so this is for the LRTA in our region, to improve infrastructure, to improve services. And also something on the education fund, and I'll just touch on it, well, was the special education costs. And I know Representative Cataldo had a few things to add to that. And that's on $248 million. So we understand certainly the struggles that cities and towns are having in those, in those categories. And these things will help as we, we start moving through our budget process. But we anticipate to, you know, to have that budget, the supplemental budget passed this Wednesday. And soon after that, our, our fiscal year 26 budget will be coming before August 1st as well. And Simon, if you had anything to add to that?
Sure. Thanks, Representative. And thanks to the members of the board and the town staff, town manager, for inviting us to come in again. I also want to compliment the members of the Select Board and the town manager for having such a good line of communication with the delegation again this year. It's something I feel like every, every year around budget season, we come back and we thank you for being so communicative. And really, it's not to be taken for granted that a municipality will be out front in making clear the priorities. The earmarks that were mentioned are one small example of that. Those were communicated to us well ahead of when we had to file earmarks, giving us enough time to speak with each other among the delegation, to divvy them up, to make sure that we were communicating to leadership in the House that these were all of our priorities together. And so for instance, the third earmark that the rep didn't mention is for tree canopy restoration. It's all over town. It's not just in my district south of 495. It's for the whole town, just like we know that Chelmsford residents are served from all over town, are served at the senior center. Also want to thank you for communicating to us priorities in your budget. And a quick shout out as well, I know there's a lot of coordination between the town and the school district. One of the things that was mentioned was the circuit breaker reimbursements for special education, which obviously has a major impact on the fiscal health of the town overall, because such a high proportion of the town's budget goes towards the school district. And this has been a major pressure point. So we included, we, we had a significant gain in the regular fiscal year budget, but out of the 593.5 million that are dedicated out of the surtax funds, the fair share funds that the rep just mentioned for education, 248 of that. So, so nearly half is going to the special education cost for circuit breaker reimbursements for local districts. So we hope that that is something that alleviates some of the pressure that certainly Chelmsford School District has been, has been feeling on that. Another smaller thing, but something that I think is becoming increasingly relevant in Chelmsford is we invested $25 million for high dosage tutoring to support literacy among students in grades K through three. And we know, and we've heard from the community that as Chelmsford becomes more of a diverse community, that that is, is certainly, again, a pressure point on the school districts. It's creating costs and the state, you know, we're doing what we can to make sure that the state is a good partner in that. So again, just, just want to thank you for your collaboration, for the line of communication which remains consistent and production, productive. And I look forward to answering any questions. I know there are a few other things on the list that we haven't hit on yet. So happy to, to go through those in a manner that makes sense for, for the board. And I hope that we don't end this call without at least me learning where Select Board member Hardy got his shirt, because I am going to want to purchase one of those. Thank you. And happy Flag Day a couple of days late.
Well, I have to get ready for the parade, you understand.
Representative, I didn't see, Representative, I didn't see Select Board Hardy's shirt. Now I see it.
Yeah. I thought you were saving that one for me. It was like a softball.
I appreciate it. I obviously spend too much time online. And I closed repeat, repeatedly. And you can go into my, I, when I first got out of rehab, there was a woman staying in my house to watch over me, said she had never seen a man with so much, so many clothes. I like being colorful. I mean, that's, you know.
Okay, so, so we have a list of some, oh yeah, and we have Representative Elliott here also, yes.
I don't, I don't have any more comments on Select Board.
Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I don't know if you want to go in order. You want an update for some of the things that I've been working on in North Chelmsford and the Westlands?
I would like, I would like that.
Yeah, okay, sure. So like my colleagues, thank you for, thanks for having us. It's good to, it's good to come quarterly to, to exchange ideas and communicate. I think I stay in touch pretty closely with the town manager and, and members of the board. So I, I could say, I know that we're talking about earmarks a little bit. I was, as we sort of divvied up the earmarks, I was able to get $75,000 for treatment at Freeman Lake. Fingers crossed that these earmarks are going to hold. You know, interestingly, I just left the, I left the governor and the Secretary of Administration of Finance just, just a couple hours ago. We had the Canadian premiers and the governors in the standhouse today. And, you know, I happen to get the secretary's ear relative to FY 26. 25 is going good. We're hitting our benchmarks. I know Rep Arciero and Rep Cataldo maybe spoke a little bit about the surtax, but this year is, is pretty good, in his opinion. And we're watching closely next year. But for the earmarks, it looks like, you know, we're in good shape. And we gotta, you know, draw that money down of, you know, fingers crossed that there will be no 9C cuts. Seemingly, Secretary Gorkovich did not mention that at all whatsoever. I'm a member of the Committee on Ways and Means. So it's good to keep, you know, I kind of keep tabs on, on where we are and where we're going. But, you know, other things that I, just as recently as today, I've, I've received a, a number of complaints relative to the train horns, the long prolonged horns from the Williamsburg condominium complex. As you know, there's 420 units in Williamsburg, one and 120 and two. So I actually attended a meeting for Williamsburg One and planned to attend the condominium meetings and Two. Surprisingly, much to my surprise, and I won't belabor the issue because this will be coming up at a lot of time before the Board of Selectmen, I reached out and sent a letter to CSX Railroad, who purchased Pan Am and, and my history and experience in the city of Lowell. They were very unresponsive and we never really had great luck with working with Pan Am. But CSX did respond. And they're willing to work with us. They know the information. Like I said, I sent them a letter. I forwarded an email to the town manager today and hopefully get on the, on the agenda for the Select Board to see if we can do something about, about the horns. I can hear them across the river in my house. That's how, that's how loud they are. So long story short, to, the town will have to create, apply to the Federal Railway Administration for a quiet zone. CSX will support that. There's been, when CXS bought Pan Am, they're putting $100 million into the tracks, which contributes to more of the trains running that spur. And there's more to come. So I'll, I'll, I will stop there. And I'll come to see it later. Ledged Road, I don't think I have to tell you about anything on Ledged Road, right? I've been to all the meetings, all the hearings, the zoning board of appeals, attended the neighborhood meetings with the neighbors. That'll come to Wednesday night is seemingly the, the final. And hopefully the neighborhood will be supported. I know that there's been discussion about fair share. Is there anything, you know, the Maurepas River boat access, that does move, albeit at a very slow pace, we knew it would. Mr. Manager, I don't know if there's anything to add other than we've been in touch, the fire chief, with money will be in FY 26 capital plan, construction 2027. I know it's a lot slower than I would like, but at least it's in the plan. Design permitting is well underway. Anything else on that, Mr. Manager?
No, I think that's it.
I don't, I don't think there's any progress on that. So if there's any other questions, that's, that's some of the sort of more updated stuff that I have for, for North Chelmsford. I know they're in the email. There's, you know, questions about new tax exemption for seniors, local options for lodging, et cetera, et cetera. I, I can have, you know, I have some updates. I don't know if my colleagues want to jump on these, though.
So I know that Representative Cataldo has to duck out at 6:30. So if we, if, I don't know if there's anything on this list in particular, on our list of legislative topics that we propose that he, that he specifically would like to comment on maybe before he, before he has to go?
Sure. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ray.
Oh, no, nothing. I, I'll let you go, Representative, because I'll add something might take a little longer.
Okay.
Thank you.
So on, so looking, looking through this list, just a couple of points, and I will be very brief. The Municipal Empowerment Act, the last time that we were here before the Select Board and discussed that, it's my understanding that the board supports the act. The refiled act, I believe, has some small changes to the percentages that are in there. And so it would be helpful to us to have your feedback on, you know, anything you would like to see different as that makes its way through the process so that we can ensure that we are advocating in a manner that's in line with what the town would like to see on that. And for those who, who don't know, that, that concerns giving municipalities like Chelmsford more flexibility in how they tax certain things, including lodging and meals, as well as a vehicle excise tax. There was a question about prescription drug costs, which is always top of mind for so many of us, so many families, so many employers. And I did want to mention that the legislature passed last session and the governor signed into law a major prescription drug cost reform in January, in early January, before we restarted this session. And just so, for example, one of the important details of that bill is that for common conditions like diabetes, asthma, certain heart conditions, the bill requires insurers to eliminate cost sharing for requirements for one generic drug and to cap copayments on one brand name drug at $25 per 30-day supply, which is, for some of those drugs, a very significant difference. And glad to continue the discussion about how we can be doing better on that issue as a state. I'll stop there and glad to answer questions if there's time, or talk about other issues as well.
Everybody still there? Okay.
Does anyone have any, any questions for Representative Cataldo, I guess, in particular?
I had two issues I would love to talk to. It's not a question to Representative Cataldo, so I'm gonna let him off the hook. First is this, I know we've had this discussion with this board before. I know Manager Cohen and I have had this conversation about Chapter 90, the governor, and it's road and bridge improvements for 351 cities and towns. I'm the Chair of the Transportation Committee. So right now, we've been working on this legislation. It's a little bit more than just the road and bridge repair piece. There's also a piece dealing with, with expedited bridge repair, as well as culvert, culvert revitalization as a lot of communities are dealing with stormwater, federal stormwater mandates across the state. And we've seen sort of our climate resiliency change over the last 10 to 15 years. So as of right now, Governor Healy has put forward as part of the $8 billion transportation plan, a little over $1.4 billion for a Chapter 90 bill over five years. Traditionally, the legislature has done every year typically. Last year, it was in the line of about $300 million, $200 million for the majority of the cities and towns, and $100 million for cities and towns in Western Mass, specifically dealing with road mileage. The formula that is set up for Chapter 90 specifically takes into consideration road mileage, but businesses as well as population, or sorry, should I say, employment, business and population. So in Western Mass, it's been difficult with a less population, less bigger businesses in that area for the formula to always work for them. So right now, we're working with the House Ways and Means Committee to come out certainly with, with a product that people can be proud of in, in cities and towns across the state, and legislators will be proud to vote for. So I, I will say that there, there has been, you know, obviously more push from the Mass Municipal Association and others to have a multi-year piece. But to this point at right now, I don't, I don't know what the years will be for this plan. But I do anticipate that we will be rolling this out in a few weeks. I haven't gotten the official word yet, but, but we continue to analyze the numbers and the categories. So that's one piece. There's another question I think folks asked us about expansion on MWRA. I know we had this conversation last session when Speaker Mariano had actually talked about MWRA expansion during the housing bill. So last year, the legislature passed the Affordable Homes Act, which invested $5 billion in, in housing production across the state, in particular, $2 billion for our, our housing authorities, including here in Chelmsford. But I think the conversation was that we had with this board, and I know we've had with the town manager as well, is, hey, look, with MBT communities, that's 177 communities throughout the state, with aging infrastructure, I know my, the towns I throughout the state with aging infrastructure, I know my, the towns I represent in Westford as well as Littleton are having these conversations around grid capacity, around infrastructure, water and sewer. And so I know that conversation comes up about expansion on MWRA, and I know, to my understanding, they've been going through a series of studies to, you know, to take into consideration the expansion and adding more cities and towns to that. And I know that'd be something that Chelmsford would be interested in. I hard and hard know that with some of the larger pieces of legislation we put forward, whether that's MBT communities, whether that's our transportation improvements, we're looking at an $8 billion transportation plan in this fiscal year. And what we've done for the expansion of housing production with the Affordable Homes Act, that we're going to need improved infrastructure, that is going to be something that this state is going to have to look at every city and town is because water and sewer are becoming very, very difficult to have enough resources and enough capacity for cities and towns. So I just wanted to touch on that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Is there anything on the list that anybody wants to specifically, I mean, do you want to go through the list? Is there anything that anyone wants to specifically ask questions about?
Well, there's a couple of things that haven't been covered yet.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to hear, you know, what they have.
Do you want to, we can just go through the list if you'd like. I mean, it looks like we've talked about the MWRA, and it sounds like it's on your radar that the towns in the area are looking into it, right?
It is, Chair. Thank you.
We've talked about prescription drug costs.
I added Chapter 90, road and bridge. It wasn't necessarily on the list, so.
Okay. FY 26 state operation budget and supplemental fair share funding for municipalities. I feel like this has kind of been covered unless anybody has any specific questions. Now, what about local option taxes for lodging and meals? Does anyone have specific questions about that for our representatives?
I think they asked us to look at that again and see what we feel about the new percentages, which we can do that maybe for our next meeting.
Yeah, I think the governor filed municipal empowerment 2.0, and included that were many of the provisions that were in municipal empowerment 1.0. I don't have any idea the likeliness of that moving through. I know there are some concerns in the legislature. I don't know if the Chair or Rep. Cataldo have anything.
Yeah, Representative Elliott is correct. The governor's omnibus bill does cover a lot of these issues, which is still in committee right now. I think with the sort of enormity of the budget issues that we're having, I mean, everybody, you know, I think we all know it from, you know, from municipal to state to federal, it's the uncertainty, really, in the private sector, uncertainty of the effects of tariffs, the effects on the federal level. And so our budget, and we've been able to do with, partly with the SRTAX, but also remember, we have, if not the most robust, one of the most robust rainy day funds of anywhere in the country. What does that mean? It's almost $8.3 billion. It allows us to invest in, you know, the programs and our particular values in government without enormous repercussions on some of these bills, whether it's the, you know, using some of the SRTAX money for our transportation system and investing in particular programs within education, the free lunch program being one of them. And so we've been able to insulate ourselves from some of that, but we also are mindful that won't be forever. So we're cautiously optimistic in the budget moving forward, but certainly those three in the morning wake-ups that I think chairs and select board members and legislators have about, you know, the effects of cuts on things, those are going to continue. And I think we can do the best we can here to insulate ourselves locally and through, locally, I mean, the state of Massachusetts, not in Chelmsford necessarily, but giving ourselves more options, if you will, you know, not to be, you know, have those draconian sort of cuts on the services that we depend on.
Okay. Does anyone have anything?
You know, I can just jump in a little because I know, at least on Ways and Means, we heard loud and clear throughout the nine public hearings that were held and I attended throughout the state, you know, the discussion, particularly in the Western, you know, smaller communities, the education funding formula is of concern. And I do think that dialogue has started relative to, you know, you'll notice this year there was a significant increase in the cost per pupil for communities across the state. I think that's a start. There was an increase in transportation funding for, you know, that in large part will benefit rural communities, but I, you know, that did initiate a discussion on the education funding formula and how can it be a little bit more equitable, if you will, knowing communities, in particular, smaller rural communities are struggling with education costs. Where that will end up, I don't know, but there is a dialogue that is taking place.
Okay. Does anyone have any?
We also have something here on statewide ban on plastic bags.
Yep.
Right, so I think I heard a, yeah.
Yes, it's on the list. It's on the list.
All right. Yeah, so on that piece, you know, that's something that's been discussed statewide. I know the towns that I represent have had that ban already. It certainly only makes sense to, you know, to have that ban for all the notable reasons why. We covered, I think the other thing we didn't cover was the bottle bill expansion.
Yeah, so are these things, so is the statewide ban on plastic bags, is that a, is that moving forward?
Yeah, it's a bill filed, yeah. There's, over the last few years, Chair, there's been a number of bills that have been filed to specifically do that. I'm in favor of that. I know not all cities and towns feel it's a one-size-fits-all. I certainly think the reduction of our carbon footprint and to do more renewables is certainly what our children are teaching us even more than the values that we have here. But that is a bill that's been filed over the years, and I think a lot, what we've seen is a lot of home rules or people have been doing it locally. So for instance, the three towns that I represent, Chelmsford, Littleton, and Westford have all done it. And, you know, I think it's not a, it's not a, it's an if and it's a when. It's not an if, it's a when. So I do think it's going to be one of those issues that's going to get a little bit more momentum, as well as probably around an environmental bond bill, which is slated to come this legislative session. I think you could see conversations on environmental issues such as that, as well as one that's been kicking around, my goodness, at least 15 years. I know the select board member, Wo, just knows this one well. There's five bills right now in committee expanding the bottle bill to include the nip bottles. So that's something that has been kicking around for a number of years. And again, it's, I believe it's not going to be an if, it's going to be a when.
I hope that includes water bottles, too.
Yeah, there's a whole host of them, Pat, a whole host of bills that kind of cover those things, and water bottles being one of the biggest culprits as well.
Sure. Okay. And then one of our favorites, the double pole conversation.
Right.
Sure, if you have any updates or comments on that.
Representative, do you have anything on that?
I don't have anything other than it was, it was and continues to be plagued the other communities that I represent and one of the more, second to perhaps CSX or Pan Am, one of the more challenging problems in the city. I can remember as a city councilor, at one point, we had 400 double poles throughout the city, and it was, you know, we just had to get to the point where we would refuse new service, which is unfair to the, you know, to the new property owner. But I don't have anything updated, Mr. Chairman.
There was a hearing on June 4th. There's a number of bills, one being a commission dealing with it, but I think, I know Pat and Paul, I think I've been here, we've had these discussions in the past, too. And so that's, it's a little frustrating that we haven't moved forward on this, but it's something a lot of communities certainly do support, and it's on our minds right now. And these are a lot of things that we're going to be tackling this session, so.
I know there's one in Vinyl Square that we have to take care of.
It's gone now.
It is gone now. Okay, see, there you go.
Okay.
Can I just give a couple of more updates? I had written a letter to Mass DOT approximately two years ago, a little over two years ago, when I received some concerns and complaints from residents on East Richardson Road. And I guess my letter made somewhat of an impact because there will be a public hearing on potential improvements. Let me just get the date. I think it's upcoming. I have sent it to the town manager and I believe.
July 8th.
July 8th. July 8th. I think that's good news because I had placed, you know, subsequent calls to Mass DOT following more concerns of the, it is a very dangerous intersection, so my fingers are crossed that, you know, that Mass DOT or Mass Highway will, you know, put blinking, make some traffic improvements.
They get the traffic signals they're proposing, yeah.
Yeah, a traffic signal could be on the way, which I'm keeping my fingers crossed. And the second thing is, I did notice at town meeting that town meeting passed an article relative to pet cemeteries. Two years ago, I did file a bill for Mary Donovan relative to creating a statute to protect pet cemeteries. I did refile that bill, and I did see it go through town meeting to do a study of some sort, so just wanted to update that.
So you're saying we can reach out to you as part of our study?
Yes, Mary does. Mary reaches out to me quite often. But, you know, we sent the study two years ago, and, you know, maybe we'll get a little bit more progress this time around.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else for our representatives? Mr. Cohen? No? Nobody?
I wonder if I could just ask a general question. Given all the uncertainty that we're hearing from the federal government, is there any potential opportunities, I guess, to fill the, fill gaps that we might see as far as reduced revenue from the federal government that you're aware of, or what can we do? What can you do?
Yeah, I mean, you know, in some ways, Pat, I think the frustration is your hands are, you know, tied in some ways, right? We can give you the tools in the toolbox to assess yourself if the town so wants to move in that direction, but we haven't passed that particular piece yet, which increases that amount for hotels and rooms as part of the governor's plan. I initially talked a little bit about that kind of 3 o'clock in the morning concern or anxiety about things being funded. So from our end, too, Mass Taxpayers Foundation had said $15 to $16 billion if the tariffs or the cuts were to go through in a $62 billion budget, which is not only draconian, but it's going to be devastating. You know, certainly, we've continued to move forward. Again, I've talked a little bit about what we've done. The SRTAX has outperformed the initial discussion. I think there was some concern from the, you know, folks that were against the millionaire's tax that, you know, mass economy would, you know, hit the pits and people would move to New Hampshire. That hasn't necessarily happened. It's overperformed right now, so that's one piece to it. But I think there's also, the other thing is, when you look at enormous cuts to educational institutions, nonprofits, that do, in a lot of cases, sort of this boots-on-the-ground work in human services and advocacy, that's going to come back to the state, too. So that's on our minds as well. Right now, Pat, I would say that we're certainly trying to be very vigilant, move forward with a responsible budget that's balanced. And with that, we're also very cautious, and that is done, you can see that by the work of our Ways and Means chairs and the Speaker and the Senate President in the sense that we have one of the most robust rainy day funds of anywhere in the country, and that shows that we have been very cautious. I know that a number of us have served during economic crises, and I've represented you in Chelmsford. We've gotten through it, it's been difficult, and I do feel that, I don't have all the answers, but I do know that Massachusetts is certainly in better shape than a lot of other states across the country.
So to kind of add to that a little bit, actually, I have a question regarding Medicare costs, because I feel like that's more of a question of how our state representatives are liaising with our federal government to advocate for us. And, you know, Medicare costs for the town are a huge, huge hit in our budget. This year in particular, they went up 17% or something. So is that a conversation that, you know, the state reps are, is that something that's being monitored? I mean, I hear you talk about prescription drug costs, which is wonderful, but then that's wonderful for all of us at a personal level, but it doesn't do much for the town in a bigger picture.
I think anytime when you have, when you talk, I mean, the mass taxpayers, the Pioneer Institute, others have talked about the numbers, the sheer numbers that could change if any of these, you know, tariffs and cuts were instituted. And I think right now, it's a lot of uncertainty. I can't point to one particular space, I'm going to say, you know, this much will be cut or won't. I could certainly give you a more comprehensive list that we've heard through, you know, through DOGE and other things that would affect the state. But I think right now, it's having to be vigilant and move forward with, you know, the work that needs to be done and finding the best way to get resources that we need. I wish I had a better answer for you in terms of all the effects of all of state and federal government, but I certainly do know that when it comes to, you know, education, when it comes to transportation, two pieces also that are affected by the federal government. We've done a, you know, a solid job of putting into place resources through the SRTAX category, and, you know, the Ways and Means Committees had their conference committee and just released, you know, that budget today, again, with investments in education, with special education costs, as well as regional transit authorities and the T across the state. Those are things that we've been able to do locally, and I say locally like Massachusetts. But 47, I mean, let me rephrase that, 45 to 6% of our entire budget is healthcare and our reimbursement from the federal government. So a lot of those categories, and especially that subject matter, gives us a lot of anxiety, but I don't have a specific answer to on how things could change other than, I think we're all kind of buckling up and being vigilant and doing the best we can to find the resources we need for our constituents.
I can't add much more than that, even as Representative Asier is correct, you know, the largest piece is healthcare, right? 46% last year grew by $2.8 billion. So there will be legislation moving through the legislature for reform. Additionally, there'll be more prescription reform, but particularly acute care in our emergency rooms, that's where we see dramatic increases. But there is concern with the Medicaid piece and the federal government and that bill moving through Congress, because Massachusetts receives $16 billion in reimbursement. So any hiccup there, and we do have very stable reserves, and the Commonwealth is one of the strongest economies in the nation. You know, that being said, any, let's say, hiccup in Medicaid, that's a big hit. So, but we're moving forward, you know, conservatively, trying to, you know, wade through all the cacophony in Washington, but still moving forward, as Rep. Asier and Cataldo mentioned, with the values of Massachusetts. And, you know, we're stable, and we're confident that, you know, we're going to make it through it next year. As I mentioned, the secretary had said the economy is softening a bit, so we'll have to be a little bit more conservative, but we're keeping an eye on. Luckily, I'd say the governor and the Attorney General, when it comes to federal resources on NIH or Medicaid or any education, you know, they're fighting the fight for us, and that's an important element, too.
So thank you to all of you for those answers.
So thank you to all of you for, for those answers and for, for Pat and the chair asking the questions. I just want to circle back with, with one thing you said, you know, on the, on the local option two point oh, and that there's some concerns that's moving slowly. I think with everything you just described, which we all know is, is coming and the general uncertainty, you know, it does give me a little angst that, you know. I agree, government needs to kind of move slowly and methodically and, and with participation across the spectrum, but when, when these times come and we know the budget crunch is coming, we happen to be well-prepared for it, too. I'm pleased with that. But we need to be able to move things along a little bit quicker. And, and I know you hear that every day, but, but, you know, me as a board member here, I want it to be heard from me and, and the, from me and the rest of the members of the town that I'd like some comfort in knowing that you guys are as stressed as we are, but I'd also like to know that, that you and the governor are prepared to act quickly if things start to change.
Yeah, I, I think Representative Asiero, myself, and Catala can, can say with a certain level of certainty, if, if that's possible, these, during these times, that the governor is. I mean, the governor is ready to, look, I spent twenty-four years on a local level. I get it. I get that you manage resources to their fullest. And, you know, some of these cuts, they, they hurt. They, they hurt a lot and we see it throughout the Commonwealth with school budgets and, and town budgets and city budgets. So, you know, we understand, we, we hear you loud and clear. But I, I think we're going to, as I said, we're going to use all the tools in the box to, to continue to maintain the level of services that we have in Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Rep. Asiero has been down there longer than I, so he may know better.
All right, well, if nobody has anything else, thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it, as always. Nice to see you. I think we've lost Representative Catala.
And I, and we will furnish the committee as things progress with updates on the issues that the aforementioned is, issues that you sent us and emailed to us, so we'll, we'll be sure to be vigilant about those changes and make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will return to public service announcements.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, first one at this point. Celebrate Juneteenth, the commemoration of freedom and unity, where? On Chelmsford Common on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, eleven to three. Check it out. Local food vendors, music keynote speakers and performances. For more information, please contact Chelmsford's Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for more information. Chelmsford Market on the Common announcing the 2025 season of the artisan and farmer's market. That'll be every Saturday from May thirty-first to October eleventh, and that'll run from eleven to two o'clock on the Common. Project update from Mass DOT for the Chelmsford Lowell Bridge Bundle Replacement Project. Phase one bridge closures begin June twenty-twenty-five. The Mass DOT will fully replace two bridges in the town of Chelmsford. These include Westwood Street over I-495 in Chelmsford and Route 3A Gorham Street over I-495 on the Chelmsford Lowell Line. How will this affect you? The contractor began early action work in April two thousand twenty-five, including signage and temporary traffic installation in preparation of the phase one bridge detours. Following the completion of this work, the contractor anticipates implementing, implementing the phase one bridge detours as follows. Gorham Street Bridge Phase One Closure to be implemented Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. So that's next week. And the Westwood Street Bridge Closure to be implemented twenty-four hours a day from Thursday, June twenty-sixth till July third, two thousand twenty-five. The bridge will reopen on July fourth through Sunday, July sixth. Following this reopening, the phase one closure will be implemented on Monday, July seventh. Each bridge will be closed to vehicular traffic twenty-four hours a day for approximately twelve to eighteen months. A local detour route will be implemented at each bridge for all vehicles. Pedestrian access will be maintained across each bridge during these closures. Bicycle access will be maintained from Westwood Street during the closure and will follow the vehicular detour route for the Gorham Street Bridge. When phase one is completed, the bridges will reopen to all traffic. More public information from Mass DOT. This is for improvements on Route 3A Princeton Street from Richardson Road to Technology Drive. An in-person public information meeting will be held for the Route 3A Reconstruction Project from Richardson Road extending southerly onto Route Four to the intersection with Technology Drive. A traffic signal is proposed to be installed at the Route 3A Princeton Street Richardson Road intersection. How will this affect you? The Route 3A Princeton Street Richardson Road intersection will have improved safety with the new traffic signal. Access management will be consolidated at driveways. Pedestrian and bicycle facilities will be constructed as well. That meeting will happen on Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at six P.M. at the Police Station Community Room at Two Old North Road in Chelmsford. There is a special town meeting a week from tonight. A special town meeting will convene at seven thirty on Monday, June twenty-third at the Senior Center at seventy-five Groton Road. A copy of the special town meeting warrant is available now on the town's website. Any resident of the town who is not an elected town meeting member may attend sessions of the town meeting and participate in questions and answer discussion portions of the proceedings. Links to the town meeting presentation document and the finance committee's warrant book will be found on the town meeting webpage at least one week prior to the town meeting. Fourth of July festivities. So a listing of the festivities for the third and fourth of July. Thursday, July third, from three to nine P.M. Art Festival at Chelmsford Arts Society, Chelmsford Center for the Arts. Five to ten P.M. The Country Fair will be held, and that's sponsored by the Chelmsford Lions Club, and that'll be on the Chelmsford Common. Five to seven P.M. Martin and Kelly Country Band Concert from Nashville, Tennessee, sponsored by the Chelmsford Parade Committee. Enjoy food and drink vendors on the Common. Six P.M. to six fifteen, the Suburbanettes will perform, I assume on the Common as well. And seven fifteen to eight thirty, the Chelmsford Community Band will be performing on the Common. On Friday, July fourth, from eight A.M. to one P.M., there's a Country Fair sponsored by the Chelmsford Lions Club on the Center Common. Eight thirty, there'll be, eight thirty A.M. there'll be a flag raising by the police and fire departments at the Center Common Flagpole. Eight thirty A.M., there's an arts festival for, at the Center for the Arts. Nine thirty A.M., the Carson Road Race begins. And ten A.M., the Independence Day Parade starts and comes down North Road into the Center. Last Town of Chelmsford Public Notice for the Annual Town Meeting. Town of Chelmsford will convene the twenty twenty-five Fall Town Meeting on Monday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. Articles to be included on the warrant must be submitted to the Office of the Town Manager at fifty Bilrika Road prior to four P.M. on Monday, August fourth, two thousand twenty-five. These are for citizens petitions. Petitioned articles must carry the signatures of at least ten voters. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at nine seven eight two five zero five two zero two. And that's by the Chelmsford Select Board. And that's all I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Pat. Next up, we have general public input. Do we have anyone for public input? No one on Zoom? Okay, so next on our agenda, we have committee vacancies.
Committee vacancies this week. As of June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Agricultural Commission has one unexpired three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. The Commission on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, one unexpired three-year term ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, and two three-year terms ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. The Council on Aging Board has one unexpired three-year term ending on June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, and one unexpired three-year term ending on June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. Historic District Commission Alternate Member has one three-year term ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-seven. Holiday Decorating Committee has two unexpired one-year terms ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Parade Committee welcomes all applicants. One-year terms ending July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. And the Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. If you're interested in serving on a town board or committee, please complete an online application available on the town website. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at two five zero five two zero two or TM Office at chelmsfordmass.gov.
Thank you, Pat. And I just want to note that the unexpired term on the Tree Committee, Jim Martin just resigned from the Tree Committee after twelve years, and I think it's, it's notable to, to say that he brought a wealth of knowledge and experience to that committee and had a lot to do with a lot of coordination with the DPW. And they've, they've done a lot of really amazing projects over the last few years that he's been a big part of, so thank you to him for his service on the committee. Next up, we have licenses. And first up, we have a license for a one-day wine and malt beverage license and expansion of entertainment license for Center Brick House Pizza. Do we have someone from Center, from Brick House? Hi.
Good evening. Good evening. Jimmy Spalding, owner-operator. That's my wife Diana Spalding as well. We're just looking to do the one-day extension of the license, which would entail what you just referenced in regards to the beer and wine, as well as having some music outside in efforts to kind of make sure that we're not disruptive of anyone else in the center. We're going to go straight acoustic music this year, so that wouldn't have any kind of volume issues as well, so. But as far as any, you know, the plans, it's exactly kind of scripted, same as last year. I've already been in touch with Lieutenant Poore from the Fire Department and Dinesman in touch with the chief at the Fire Department as well.
Are you doing a stage this year?
Ah, yes.
You are?
Yep.
You're going to permit, you're going to get proper permits?
That's on, that's already been worked on, because last year we were up against the finish.
I was the guy that got it.
Thank you very much. But that's already been worked on. I believe that was squared away, Diana.
I reached out to him.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Is this the first year that you guys have applied for this?
This is the second.
This is the second, right? Okay, last year it was you also, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
So, so as far as the total capacity, it's not going to exceed the ninety-four, which is what you have inside?
This is, this would be the outside tent and, not tent, tables and stage.
Okay, because-
Because inside, we will not be over the capacity now.
Okay, because the building commissioner did note in his, his letter, the combined capacity should not exceed ninety-four. And I, you know, I thought it was.
Yeah, no, I mean, it was vastly over that. That's why we, last year, we were certified in the, the crowd control. Me, Diana, and Christina, our manager, do have that. So I don't know if we filled the application out wrong. I'll double-check that now, but it certainly was the intention to have that outside.
Right, okay.
But while maintaining the code inside.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Oh, it can't exceed ninety-four inside and outside at the deck area.
I'm guessing he's referencing the deck.
Yeah, at the deck area.
I mean, that's how we operate every day, is under those conditions.
Yeah.
I don't think that he meant relevant, but we can ask him for clarification on that if you'd like.
Okay, okay. If nobody has any more questions, I'll take a motion.
Motion for the Board to approve a one-day beer and wine license for Center Brick House Pizza on July third, two thousand twenty-five, as presented.
Second half?
We have a motion in a second, and we will do a roll call vote because we have Mr. Hurdie on Zoom, so I'll do a roll call vote. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojcicki?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye, and the motion passes. Congratulations.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Good luck. Next up, we have a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for the Chelmsford Public Library. We have someone here.
Hello, everybody. So thank you again for having us here. This is our sort of biannual show, the Chelmsford Arts Society, which you referenced in the July fourth events. After July fourth, they moved that show into the library, and once in July and once in December, they have an evening reception. They provide wine. We have a TIPS-certified server there, and, you know, we usually get between fifty and seventy people. It's usually a pretty nice event.
Does anyone have questions? No, I'll take a motion.
Okay, motion to approve a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for Chelmsford Public Library at twenty-five Boston Road for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, as presented.
Second half?
I have a motion in a second, and I'll do a roll call vote again. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Yes.
And I'm an aye, the motion passes. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next up, we have a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for Saint Vartanans Armenian Church. Do we have someone here for that?
Hi, I'm-
Hello.
I'm here. Hi, my name is Bruce K. Janion. I'm the parish council chair of Saint Vartanans, and we're requesting the one-day liquor license for our annual church picnic on Sunday, August third.
Does anyone have any questions? I'll take a motion.
Okay, motion to approve a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license to Saint Vartanans Armenian Church at one eighty O Westford Road for the day of August third, two thousand twenty-five. And I don't see any hour restriction, so as presented.
Second half?
I have a motion in a second, and we'll do a roll call vote again. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Passes. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
And lastly, under licenses, we have a inflammable storage license revocation hearing for fifteen Wellman Ave. So, let's see.
I don't believe there's anybody here. We're required to advertise it. We, we really didn't, we're sure we're going to expect anybody, because we don't believe they'll contest this revocation, but we are required to advertise it.
We did a few of these, what, a year or so ago?
Exactly.
Oh, they're just ones that have been removed already, and it's just getting rid of the license that's still on file?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they're not operating at fifteen.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments? No, I'll take a motion. Or do we need a motion? We need a motion to revoke the license, right?
Yes.
Okay, motion to revoke the inflammable storage license at fifteen Wellman Ave as presented.
Second half?
We have a motion in a second, and we'll do a roll call vote again. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojcicki?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Okay, and next up, we have the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee regarding the clock location in the municipal parking lot. I think we have someone here to talk to us about that. Hello, welcome.
Hi, y'all. Thanks for having me. For, for those that I don't know, I'm Bill Gillette. I'm from North Chelmsford. I also sit on the Vinyl Square Strategic Planning Committee. It's been a little while since I came before you. Some of you weren't on the board at that time. And having a discussion amongst the committee, we said we probably ought to give you a quick update. It's really around two things. I probably just go right to the, to the agenda. Since we came the last time, Paul and the, and the board had suggested that we create a focus group. We did that. Sixteen of us, residents, business people, the town, state reps, et cetera. Several meetings. We had the Verden Clock Company there. We talked- We talked about fundraising, location, things like that. And we did establish a website as well. If you want more information, you are more than welcome to go on. There's a place that you can all donate as well, if, if you see the, the desire to do that, of course. But where, there was a couple of things. The estimate itself actually was higher than what I presented to you. It was like $33,000. And they weren't exactly as clear as we had hoped when, when they submitted the bid. There were things like lettering, plaques, and the likes of that, that clearly we asked for, that they didn't put in. So it's up around $40,000. We do have to still work with the DPW on some of the landscape and electrical, which I'll show you in a, in a couple of slides. Look, the good news is, is we, we overexceeded our goals, so we have all the money that, that we need for that. I was just disappointed that they weren't as forthcoming with some of the, some of the bids. The clock has been ordered, as Christine Clancy had thought it might have already been here. It isn't here yet. It should be here soon, though. I'm a bit excited about that. But there's two things that, that the committee thought we ought to share with you. One is around parking spaces, and the second is around the long-term location. It may be easier if you flip to the other sides, yeah. So this was Ju, January of 2024. The picture here, as you'll note, is illustrative. It actually wasn't ever intended to be hanging over the sidewalk like this. We asked the Verden Company just to give us something so that we could present to you, so you could see what the clock kind of looked like. And then to the right, you'll see we had that arrow. As you know, at least from my standpoint, there are three phases to Vinyl Square. The second one being a bit of a modification of the traffic flow. We thought about putting the clock into an island when that got taken care of. As Christine has shared, and Paul, you're, you're welcome to check me if I'm wrong, but it will be at least five, probably six years anyway, until that happens. And I'm going to show you in another slide or two. The committee talked about, do we even need to move it when that, when that time comes? Six years is not exactly short-term. So if you maybe flip to, to another slide, this is going to address the parking. The banner that's been out there, some of the, the flyers that, that I have handed out would show a picture that's a little bit more than, you know, what you saw from the January 24 rendition. And that would show that, that we're eliminating some parking spaces. Now, from January 24 to now, we also had those electric charging stations, and they're going to take away a number of spots as well, and that state mandated. It was voted upon at town meeting. So, as a committee, we said, you know, hey, look, we're going to lose some parking spaces because of those electric charging stations. We should try not to lose parking spaces, at least initially, with this now. So what you see here, and one of our committee members, Brian Kramer here, has done this rendition, so if you have any technical questions, I'd ask. What you might notice changes here is that you put the, the handicap parking spots over to the left from where they exist today. And we'll show you in another slide where we, we'd put that clock. You don't actually lose any parking spaces with this. Perhaps in the future, and I'll get to that as my last point, we may consider some parking spaces. If we did that, we would do a traffic study with the other municipal lots in Vinyl Square. So if you went to the next slide, this is actually the rendition of what we intend to do. It will have a bit of a small pocket park, I guess is, is what you would call that in, you know, in, in the state today. You have a little bit of grass, some bricks. One of the fundraising ideas, as they did at, at Roberts Field, was they put bricks out there, so we've sold some of those. And as we started to look at this, it looks kind of nice, and we really need something to look kind of nice in Vinyl Square. So rather, in six years, to say we're absolutely going to move it, we may not. We'll come back to this board in, in six years and determine if, you know, we decide to move it to that island. What we may actually do, because Christine suggested we could possibly get some grant funding for a, a bigger pocket park, is even make that park a little bit bigger. We'll, we'll decide that in six years. There's still talk about putting an access road to Wotton Street at the end of this municipal lot. And Paul can probably give you a better update on the renewal of the lease for this municipal lot. But those are really the, the two updates. If you, I think, Paul, the next slide is, is just what it could be in the future. You'll just see some more grass and bricks there, but you would wind up taking out those, those two parking spaces that are there. That's, that's six years down the road, at least, if not more. But what I wanted to do is at least bring this forward to you, let you know that we have fundraised for everything. Hopefully, the clock will be in very shortly. We don't intend to take any more parking spaces because that's been a concern from, from the town. And we may not move it eventually, anyway. It might stay right where it is. That's it.
Okay. Okay. Do we need an approval for this proposal?
Yeah, it would be helpful to have the board, you know, con record supporting it. Yeah. Yeah, because it's, it's town property and it's managed by DPW, but I think, you know...
I just, I don't really know what we would be...
And you say you would endorse the plan as presented, you know, the board? Because as Bill said, it's kind of, it's kind of, no, but this is what he's showing you here, which is basically, the clock's going to arrive shortly and, and, you know, the...
The immediate plan for it.
You want to get it going because one of the things you want to do is make sure, because your warranty and everything else starts up, you want to make sure it's installed, fully functional, everything else. And, and as Bill noted, you know, the, the improvements to the intersections, you know, and such, literally are on the, are on the tip, but it, it will be five to six years before the Vinyl Square project, under the current schedule, will be completed, so, you know, this...
And we're, we're not losing parking spaces with this version?
No.
We are not?
Not immediately.
No.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
I sit on the committee, so as part of some of the deliberations, so I do have a little bit of the history. I just wanted to, to double-check, because I don't recall from the other night, that the way the parking lot's configured in the, in the rendering for the 16 spots, is it, there's some change to how it's configured today? Or is that, is that the layout in the back with those parking spots facing the building?
Exactly. That's the change, is the parking spots would face the building as opposed to facing each other to the end of that lot.
And part of that is with the electric charging stations as well.
Right. So this includes the charging stations as we can be, and we can do all of that, and DPW can do all of that, and everything is kind of covered?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I thought out of all the plans that were done, this one was the one that definitely seemed to rise to the top, and I like the idea of getting that clock in there sooner rather than later.
Does anybody have any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Bill?
Yes, sir, Jeff.
Was there any consideration to put the clock on the common?
There was, actually. I appreciate the question. So, if you put it in the common, you, you would put it at the, at the outside kind of triangle, Jeff? And we all talked, that would probably block Albertson Vinyl's statue, and everyone thought that that would probably be a bad idea if we had done that, but we did consider it.
Okay. Now I understand.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that this board endorse the location of the new town clock in public parking, up in Vinyl Square, with parking and, and such as depicted and presented.
Second half?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and we'll do a roll call vote. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
And Pat Wojes?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, you're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay. Next up, we have endorsement of Northern Middlesex Economic Development District designation application.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As select board member Pat Wojes could probably better explain than I can, because she sits on NIMCOG, but basically, we received communication, and I've met with the director and executive director of Northern Middlesex Council of Government. They are pursuing the establishment of what would be known as the Northern Middlesex Economic Development District. And what they're seeking tonight from this board is a letter of endorsement from the chief executive official of each of the municipalities, obviously, in this case, the select board of Chelmsford, to create this NIMCOG region as an economic development district. Apparently, we're the only one district in this Commonwealth that doesn't have an economic development district in terms of a planning agency. And so, the, the idea is to endorse this effort because NIMCOG has to get its application in basically by the end of this month, you know, for, for federal consideration. And so what they're seeking, and you have in your packet and in front of you now, is the letter of endorsement from the, from, which should be signed by the chair on behalf of the board, to convey the support for the economic development district. You know, and this goes to the U.S. Department of Commerce. And again, the, the goal of this is part of the economic development efforts that NIMCOG is spearing up in terms of efforts to increase private investment, manufacturing, and better paying jobs in the NIMCOG region under their, what we call the SEDS Plan, but their Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan. So that's what we're, the board did previously do this about five years ago, so...
Yeah, this has been an ongoing...
It's been an ongoing effort, and hopefully will be successful this, this time around.
Okay. So I guess we need a motion of support? A motion to support the letter?
I'll make a motion that this board support the reaffirmation, or reaffirm its support of NIMCOG's application to the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration to designate NIMCOG region as an economic development district.
Second half?
Okay. A motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote again. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojes?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Next up, we have Town Manager Bit Awards.
Okay. We'll keep moving with our momentum. We have one bid award for you this evening. This is for the town offices and senior center elevator projects. Three proposals were received by DPW to the request for proposals. After the DPW review committee met, they selected the firm of NV5 of Andover, Mass, and I'm seeking the board's confirmation for the contract amount of $81,000, which again, should meet the overall project for this budget. The difference here is it's not a invitation for bids, because you're not judging by the low bidder, you're judging by the quality of the proposals. So again, they, they met, received the three proposals, did the interviews, came to the selection, and then you, once that decision is made, you then go to the price proposal where it meets the budget. That's where it ends. That's why you don't see three quotes.
I don't quite understand that, how once in a while we don't see three.
Right, because you, because you're making a determination on, not on the cost basis only, but on the quality applicant. So that's different.
But don't we always do that? I would hope, to some extent.
No, no. If it's, if it's invitation for bids, then it's the lowest qualified vendor. When it's a request for proposals, like you do for, you know, we did for our onus project manager for the school projects, or an architect, or in this case, an elevator design, you want to go, you don't want to always take the lowest cost option. So you, what you, what the law requires you to do under chapter 30B is, you're required to do a ranking of the firms, you know, after you review the proposals, do the interviews, you then go to the highest ranked, and if the highest ranked meets your budget for the project, then it ends right there. So you actually don't go, you don't then have the opportunity to go in and say, oh, if we had chosen firm B, they, their price was $8,000 less.
But so that's how we determine whether we put out an RFP or a request for bids?
Yeah, exactly. So that's why, that's why we say, well, what are the other bid, bid amounts? It doesn't matter, you know, because again, it's a, it's a service, and especially, particularly an engineering type of work, that you don't, well, you don't want to choose always the lowest qualified bidder. What you want to choose is the competent bidder who can meet your budget. So that's why the ranking, so for example, let's say, let's say their bid command was $150,000. You would say, well, we can't reach an agreement with them to cut, bring their price into our budget. You would then go to the next firm in the list, and then you'd keep working your way down until you hit...
So it just depends on the project, and the DPW determines whether or not they're putting out an RFP or a request for bids, based on the specific project at the time?
And the specific criteria is, is it, when you want to go not, but not always with the lowest price vendor.
So in this situation, it's because there was design?
Yep, exactly.
Service?
Yeah, because you...
It allowed us to go that way?
Exactly. Because you can imagine, you can have a number of people who may have certain criteria qualification for design, you know, just like we've seen for architectural and other projects, you don't always want to go with the lowest, you know, that's why you check...
Well, I feel like I've seen elevator bids that have been, that have just been requested for bids, and we just go with the lowest.
Because it's been designed already.
This is the design thing. When you go out to bid for, for the project, you'll get, you'll get the formal bids for the lowest price, who meets that design. But in this case, it's a design service, very similar to like legal services, design engineering work. You don't always want to go with...
It's a little bit more gray area.
Yeah, you don't always want to go with the lowest. So that's what the law provides, is a RFP process. And so again, they're actually submitted in separate envelopes, so when they're ranking these firms, they have no idea what the company's bidding to do the work. And you only can open that once you've finished the rankings and ratings, and then you then open the envelope. And again, you go to the first one, and if that meets it, you're done. If not, you would then go on.
I understand.
So that's how it works.
Thank you for that.
So when do we expect this to happen?
Well, the, probably for another, probably be another year, because you've got to do the design work, then you've got to bid it. We'll try to do it in the summer. The, the challenge we're going to have, it's sort of like, maybe what you're getting at, is when the elevator in this building goes out for design, we will not be able to meet in this, no, no public board will be able to meet on this floor of the building because there's no elevator. There's, there's only one elevator that gets to this level of the building.
There's no access.
So when that, when that becomes no longer viable, we'll probably be meeting maybe at the school administrative offices, or the senior center, and/or, you know, an other accessible DPW or other accessible buildings, because we would not be able to hold a meeting in this building. That's the reason why, for example, the school elevator projects are always scheduled for the summertime, because you can't have faculty or students who can't access the full building. So the hope, what Board Member Wojes is, is to hopefully have this work done next summer. But we'll see how the design and the bidding process goes. And that's why we want to get it done now, is so we can bid it favorably next winter.
So will the awarded bidder be the one that's putting everything out to bid? Or is it that they just do the design?
They'll do the design, and then we'll handle procurement through DPW, probably with some assistance from the design company.
But that eighty?
Eighty-one thousand.
Eighty-one thousand is for just, just design?
Just design, yep.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions, concerns? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that this Board recommend approval of a contract between the Town of Chelmsford and NV5 of two hundred Brickstone Square in Andover, Mass. In the amount of eighty-one thousand for design of the elevators at Town Offices and Senior Center.
Second that.
Okay, we motion in a second. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Paul just?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have Town Manager Reports.
Yeah, I'll be real brief this evening. The first one is, tomorrow, we're doing the bid opening for the borrowing of the eight point eight-five million dollars of Town's capital projects. In advance of that, we've received our bond rating from S&amp;P or more global, which is more commonly known as Standard and Poor's, the credit rating agency. And obviously, we're pleased to formally announce tonight that the town has maintained its AAA highest rating bond level possible, which it had only achieved a few years, two years ago now. As, and with a maintained, stable outlook for the community as we go into this borrowing. And that should get us the most favorable interest rates. The report highlighted the town's, you know, overall economic condition, including having a stable economy, consistent financial performance, and uptick in reserves over the past several years. They noted the town's strong financial management. However, they did express concerns, as we've known and we hear every year, particularly when we do the audit, that the town's financial stability is challenged by the major liabilities in terms of pension and other post-employment benefits or retiree health insurance. And, you know, and that's noteworthy, and as we know, that that liability is a hundred ninety-six point two million dollars as of last fiscal year. Our overall town budget's only a hundred and seventy million dollars. So, that's the concern, and, you know, and it's, we don't control the pension system. We contribute, we get assessed. As we know, Middlesex is only funded at fifty-five percent, and it's still based in the full funding in ten years on a seven point one-five percent rate of return. So, the good news is, is even with this debt issuance coming back to the town, we would only have sixty-one point five million dollars in debt outstanding. That does include the fire station project, which has not been issued at this point, but is authorized. But most of that sixty-one point five million dollars would be paid off in the next five years. I think almost seventy percent of that because most of our borrowing is for five-year because it really has to do, has to do with our capital plan. So, that's, that's good news for the town. And one thing they did note at the end is the town's credit rating agency is even greater than that of the U.S. Federal Government at this point because they feel that we're sort of doing better financial management than, you know, we have to have a balanced budget. As Representative Oaxtero noted earlier this evening, by state constitution, we have to have a balanced budget. We do. Obviously, the federal government's running deficits, and that's why their bond rating has been below the AAA rating at this point in time. So, again, good news. And then obviously, when we get the results of the, of the bond sale tomorrow, midday tomorrow, we'll notify you, and then this Board will have a special meeting next Monday night at the Senior Center prior to Town Meeting to formally approve the bond sale. And then John Sousa will bring all the bond documents for you to sign, as well as the motion for you to vote. It's, you know, it takes longer to sign the documents than it does for the bond sale approval because, for the sale. So, that's great news. And again, as I noted when I sent this out, is it, it really does reflect well on the community in its entirety, meaning this Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, Town Meeting reps, everyone who, including the voters, who, you know, have made this town financially prepared, as you heard earlier this evening, for whatever's going to come at us in the months and years ahead.
Thank you.
Congrats.
That's wonderful. Yeah, congrats, and thank you to everybody on our team that contributes to that. It's impressive.
The second item in my report is the monthly double poll report. Real brief, there's forty-seven double polls, which is the same amount as last month. The change is, is four double polls were removed and four double polls were added. What we're seeing, and again, we'll have to pull into the details, is Comcast has been lagging in terms of, remember I call you how it works, you move through the double poll relocation by where you sit on the poll, meaning National Grid goes first because they're top of the lines, and then Verizon is last, they're at the bottom. Comcast is right before Verizon, and they were lagging. I did reach out to them because of those forty-seven double polls, they were next to go on twenty of them, which was up from fourteen from the prior month. They assured me that they'd make significant progress by the end of this month. I will receive another report in two weeks, and we'll see where we're at. And as you know, the difficulty is, is we really can't impose financial sanctions. And hopefully, the legislature and others will address that. As you know, we've been sought after for a long time. And the other issue is, is there are third, what we call third-party fiber on the lines, meaning, you know, they tend to be wireless companies that are not National Grid, not Comcast, not the Town's cable. And we work with National Grid to get action on that because, you know, they're, they're, they're the ones who sort of license that activity. So, that's where we are on double polls this month. And then lastly, we bring to the Board, we did receive a rather lengthy report from the Chelmsford Land Conservation Trust. We're not going to dive into this report this evening. It's comprehensive, it's a hundred-page document. This is the first time the Trust has done its monitoring on the conservation restriction at Sunny Meadow Farm that the town acquired in two thousand and eight. So, obviously, they were overdue in conducting the monitoring. It highlighted some, I guess, deficiencies in compliance with the, with the restriction. I will take responsibility for that because the town has been, I guess, less attentive as we should have been in terms of making sure that the property is maintained and it's intended agricultural primary use with some open space areas on the adjacent to the property. Since this report was, was released to us on a draft form, and as it is today, as noted, significant progress has been made out there on the site. And that's been noted, and it's continuing, even those who drive by, for example, all the greenhouses have been, have been covered that before they were exposed to the weather. And the other thing the town has done is we've also suspended any new capital projects on the site until we bring the site into compliance. So, we intend to be out there this October with the land trust to visit it again, as well as to check the one area that they didn't get to, which was the compost area, which should also be completed this summer. And then we have met with the Chelmsford Open Space Stewards, and they're, as well as the other farmers on the property. We individually contacted with them and met with most of them. And they're reining in their efforts to make sure that what's on the site is intended to be the restriction because it did get a bit, I guess, lax, for lack of a better word, in terms of stuff being stored there and debris and other stuff. And so, anyway, again, as manager of the property, I'll take responsibility for it. And I can assure you, much progress has been made, and much more will continue in the months ahead.
So, Paul, we're looking at this as a roadmap then, going forward to rectify any potential issues? And rectification of those issues should be done by the fall? Is that what your suggestion?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, the, you know, and we're getting, we're receiving a lot of cooperation from, from all the licensed and leased holders out there and Open Space Stewards. So, I'm optimistic that when we report in six months or so, that things will be much better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Next up, we have appointments.
Yeah, this is annual appointments. So, you've got a detailed, lengthy list of annual appointments. Generally, what the Board has done in the past is approve them as presented because it is lengthy, and I don't know that it's necessary to read all of the appointments on the list. You can see they're broken out. Our, our office staff reached out to the officials that are listed there to see if they were interested in remaining in their capacity on the committee. And obviously, the, they have, that what you see listed there are favorable. And you can see they're segmented by the Select Board on the top part of the page, and then after the shaded area of the Town Managers' appointments, which again, need the Board's confirmation.
I guess, should we do that? Is that in two separate motions then?
I think you can do it as one motion, approve the annual appointments as, as presented.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, comments? No? I'll take a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the Board recommend approval of the appointments of the Select Board and Town Manager for the next three years as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Jeff? Oops, sorry. Pat Wojcicki?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. The motion passes.
We've got a few stragglers, so we'll probably have an appointment with you next meeting. You know, we just heard the one today, so.
And next up, we have Select Board Appointments for the, an appointment for the Board of Registars for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five?
Twenty, it should be two thousand twenty-eight.
It should be two thousand twenty-eight, yes. Okay, so.
This is required by state law. The law requires the Town Committee, in this case, Republican Town Committee, to provide you with a list of three people, which for you to choose from. Obviously, the incumbent Curtis Barton is seeking to be reappointed, and they've also provided two additional names.
And we don't have anybody here.
Curtis is here.
Curtis is here.
Hello. So, we do have somebody here. Curtis, did you, did you want to, did you want to speak to the appointment? Thank you for coming.
Curtis Barton, Precinct Nine, and also the Board of Registars for at least another couple of weeks. The, the key thing is, is this is a team game, okay? We work together as a team, along with the Town Clerk's Office, all of whom are Assistant Registars, by the way, to get everything done and make sure it's all done right. That's what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, if you have any questions, I'll answer those too.
Does anyone have any questions?
Curtis has done a good job his, so far, you know, his, his prior terms.
All right. So, I guess, how does this work? Do we take a motion to select one of the, one of the members? One of the three, we have three people that have, that have submitted interest, Curtis being one, Mr. Barton. And then we have Doreen Deschler and Brian Latina have also been nominated. So, if nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion. If somebody has a motion for someone they'd like to point?
Okay, I'll make a motion that this Board approve the appointment of Curtis Barton to the Board of Registars as presented.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
And Pat Wojcicki?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. Thank you. Thank you for your service, sir. Congratulations. Welcome back. Okay, next up, we have, we have a, an agenda item here regarding reducing the number of members on the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Yeah, right now, as noted in the correspondence from the Committee Chair, Badric Uppilipalion, there's nine committee members that, and they're seeking to reduce it from nine to seven. And Pat can correct me if I'm right. I think the reason it was nine was because when the Board originally established this committee, there was so much interest that they said, well, let's put all nine of them on.
In fact, it was, it was ten at one point.
It was ten at one point, yeah, exactly. So, again, I, generally, the Board doesn't create committees that large, but it was new, and it was interesting, exciting. Now, what you're seeing is, is it's, you know, the sense is that a seven-member committee would be equally as effective.
Which is pretty typical.
Yeah, exactly. It helps with the quorum and other issues, so.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments? I do have, I have the letter here from Badric, and I don't know if anybody.
It's in our packet, yeah.
Yeah, everyone has it, so, yeah.
So, I think it would just be a motion to, to, you know, reduce the size of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee from nine to seven members, and then we'll notify the Clerk's Office and keep track, obviously.
May I, does anyone have comments? I have no problem with that.
Nope, good.
I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that this Board reduce the size of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee membership from nine members to seven members as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojcicki?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. The motion passes. And next up, we have Town Manager Appointments.
Yeah, this is a new appointment, which is why it's segregated, to fill the vacancy on the Historical Commission, which is an unexpired three-year term expiring June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. I'm seeking the Board's confirmation of the appointment of Laura Cummins of Lynn Ave to this committee. Maybe Jeff knows her, she lives on Lynn Ave, but, but anyway, she's very well qualified.
She'll have parents, too.
Yeah, exactly. She's very well qualified, as you can tell by her background in history and so forth. So, again, and I have shared this with the Chair of the, Deputy Verna, the Chair of the Historical Commission, and she's very excited.
She's thrilled.
She's thrilled to have her come on board, yeah, so, yeah, so, seek your confirmation of this appointment.
Okay, I'll take a motion. If nobody has any comments?
I'll make a motion that this Board endorsed the appointment of Laura Cummins to the Historical Mission, Historical Commission as presented by the Town Manager.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Wojcicki?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have Liaison Reports and Referrals. So, Pat, would you like to go first?
Sure.
I'm just going to go on a circle. It's confusing having you here and Jeff on Zoom now.
I know, I know, I know. We had one meeting where we could all just raise our hands. All right, so, just a quick update on Permanent Building Committee. This was a little over a week ago. So, the town has hired Leftfield as its Onus Project Manager, and that contract has been executed. Galant Architecture Studio was hired as the designer for the project. A notice to proceed was issued to Galant, and contract negotiations have been ongoing the past few weeks. Any movement on that, Paul, on the contract negotiations with Galant?
It's signed. It's now signed, yeah.
So, it's executed?
Yep.
Okay, so, we have an executed contract with the architect at this point for the new fire stations. Project Kiff Golf meeting was held on May second, during which the team reviewed earlier studies and discussed next steps. Leftfield, our OPM, has prepared the initial project budget and schedule. The schedule will be refined once Galant Architecture provides the design deliverable schedule. The project team is conducting and coordinating the early site investigation activities, and design is starting to take off. Schematic design level cost estimates anticipated to be completed by the end of July or early August, so we'll look forward to those to see how we're doing. And then, just a quick update, the School Building Committee met the other night. We do have our OPM, which is the same OPM, Leftfield, on board. We are out, the request for services is out at this point for architecture services. And the District, Chelmsford, will expect to receive those back on the sixteenth of July. They'll be gone through. We're not going to meet, the School Building Committee won't be meeting in July, but they'll be gone through, and they'll be submitted to Mass School Building Authority on August seventh. And we anticipate a meeting with the Designer Selection Panel on August twenty-sixth. And we're hoping for a final vote on September ninth. So, hopefully, by September ninth, we have our architect on board for the school building project, and then we're off to the races. So, it's, it's going to be a long summer working through the rest of the weeds that we need to. But early September, we should have an architect on board, and that should release us to get going and get some real work done. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Pat?
Yes, a couple of things. On, on June seventh, on a Saturday night, the Chelmsford High School graduation was held at Songas Arena. So, congratulations to all of the Chelmsford High School seniors that are moving on to their next chapter in their lives. It's, it was a good day for, you know, over three hundred seniors and their families, and it never gets old, for sure. The library wants everybody to know that there are book lockers now at McKay Library where you can pick up books after hours. You can order, you can reserve them, and they will go into a locker. And there's a process you go through, and you can go and pick them up at the locker at McKay. And it will be, soon, there'll be similar lockers at the Adams Library to allow the same benefit there. And lastly, you may have heard, the Chelmsford High School baseball team is state champions in their division. So, congratulations to them. Very, very nicely done. Good work to them.
First time since nineteen sixty-six.
Yeah, I mean, and if George, and if George Dixon was still on this board, he would, he would do the play-by-play of that whole game.
Nineteen sixty-six?
Probably both.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to the Conservation Committee as much because both Carl and I have been traveling, and our schedules have been working against each other. But we have corresponded and agreed that we're going to try to meet for coffee once we're both in town and we get, get me caught up on what's going on with them. And also, the Parade Committee met last week, and as you can imagine, it's crunch time for us. And we're, we're all systems go, and they're going to be again next Tuesday to finalize the lineup for the actual parade day. Unfortunately, I'll be traveling again for business, and, but I have full confidence that the Board's going to do a great job. And, but I will be in town Monday for our next meeting and Town Meeting as well. That's about it.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Aaron?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So, it was another month, and I got the chance to go over to the Senior Center and meet with the Council on Aging Board. As Paul noted tonight, there are now two openings on that board. And I'm not, it's, if you have the time, it's once a month, it's definitely worthwhile to, to go and participate and have a cup of coffee with those guys. They're very active. This week, they, this month, they had H-Band come. I didn't know a lot about H-Band. They came and gave a talk about some of the services. They serve twenty-eight cities and towns. They have two offices in the state and over five hundred staff, and the types of services that they are able to provide. on the types of services that they are able to provide support for, for seniors and families. They have a family caregiver program, which, you know, people can use to, when they're caring for elders, to get a break. And I call that out because I think it's a fantastic program, and unfortunately, that's one of the ones that's, is going away because of some of the, some of the federal and state, related state funding cuts to that, so. But it's a great resource. If you want to know more about Age Band, you can certainly go to their website, but I would definitely talk to Debbie. The other report from Bob, who's the chairman, is that his acoustic tile project is officially in the hands of DPW. So, we'll see where Christine and her team are, go ahead and take that project. Vinyl Square is very, very busy. There's a lot of, a lot of things going on up there. That, as Pat said, the McKay Library's got a lot of activities going on. They are expanding their hours, which has been, they're going from, I think it's 12:30 to 8:30, if my notes are correct. And their library's working on their strategic plan, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of activity that's going on, and I think I saw the email for the summer concert series, so that's, that's now, and that's populated. But they're really just looking for ideas on programming and to make better use of those, the resources that we have there. And then, obviously, Bill presented on the clock tonight, and then they're just staying on top of things, so they've got the DOT project going through Vinyl Square, we've got the new one kicking off a little further up the street, and then they, and it passed the Conservation Commitment Commission, but they decided to support the Freeman Lake harvesting and treatment. Again, they really kind of touch on a lot of things that we touch on, too, so it's great to see that they're such an active group there. And then, finally, this past meeting with the Planning Board, again, that's another board that, they're incredibly active, so they had another continuation for the old Westford Road project, the old horse and cow barn area, there's two homes that are going to go up on that, up on that property. And there was another subdivision plan presented on 191 and 195 Riverneck Road, and then they took a vote on 300 Bill Ricker Road, Nexus Recovery wants to utilize that property, and there was some discussion on how it should be designated, so they opted to designate that as a hospital facility. And then, they discussed at length the 5559 Middlesex Street, which is the landing at Chelmsford Mills, they're requesting some rezoning, there's a whole weird piece of IA up there that they want to maybe use their CB light that they've been working on with Kate's Corner. So, they're really active, and they're getting ready to kind of kick off work for things that are going to be presented at town meetings, so that's kind of a work that never ends. I think they're kicking off in July to make sure they get all the public meetings in, so there's a lot to digest there, and I definitely encourage people, if you can't attend the meetings, to go ahead and watch the, watch the recordings so that you have an idea of some of the changes that are coming and how they might affect your neighborhood. And then, I have yet to meet with the Board of Assessors, but I've talked to Mr. Chase, and he said we'll get that together sometime, so that's my one liaison assignment I have to, I have to get done. But other than that, I'm good to go.
It's a good one.
Aaron?
Yes.
Excuse me, do you want to discuss the MMA meeting we attended last Friday?
Yeah, sorry, that's a, that's a good call out, Jeff. Pat asked how that was earlier, so Jeff and I, you know, were responsible and carpooled, and I think it's, it's one of those things where I think all of us, even, this one was for new, newly-elected select board members, but it's, I think there's a lot of resources there, and we could definitely periodically use some refreshes in the law, so we, they presented us with open meeting law, they presented us with things, you know, taking minutes, they presented some budgetary stuff around Prop 2 and 1/2. Again, Jeff and I are, you know, fortunate that there are some things that we could digest a little bit differently because we've already experienced some of that as being new board members, whereas a bunch of people there were, hadn't even had their first board meeting. And we heard from the town of Andover, town of Andover, right?
Yes.
Town manager, and he talked about how they, you know, how his goals are tied to the select board, the strategic plan that they have, and we definitely, the interesting part was on how Prop 2 and 1/2 worked, there are definitely some terms that I thought I understood, so we learned a little bit about that, and I appreciate Pat and the town supporting us going to, going to that meeting. It was definitely worth it. Jeff, any thoughts?
I think one thing we both realized is that we're not alone. Every town is facing the same challenges we are. And that, that's one thing I took, that was what, it was refreshing to hear, you know, other towns going through challenges and what they're doing with them, and hopefully, we can learn from some of their experiences as well.
Yeah, and the MMA is definitely active in kind of supporting and hearing our voice, and I think they collectively get together, and you heard even Representative Elliott, I think, mention it tonight. So, again, I think it's a good group for us to all be, all be connected to, and just absolutely right. I think we have challenges trying, trying being a three-member board with no town manager. I'm not sure I'd sign up for that duty, so.
Absolutely not.
All right, so, thank you. Good call out, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. And the only thing that I have was a reminder about what the ZBA has going on this week, but I'm a little bit confused, and actually, maybe you can clarify for me, because it looks like they have a Riverneck Road hearing that's scheduled to be here.
Yes.
And then, they have the Ledge Road hearing at the Senior Center. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're, they're meeting at two locations, at two separate meetings on the same evening. The Riverneck Road 40B project was advertised for this location in this room, and that will occur this Wednesday night at 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
When the Ledge Road hearing was continued, they realized they needed a larger venue than the police station could accommodate, not to mention this room, so what they did is they posted a second meeting at 7:30 PM at the Senior Center, where there's plenty of parking, plenty of seating, and so forth. So, what will happen is they'll meet here at 7, open up the application for the 243 Riverneck Road, Chapter 40B project, and then, once that's concluded, they will, they will adjourn that meeting, then they'll travel across town to the Senior Center, and no earlier than 7:30, they will open up the continued public hearing.
So, it might just start a little bit late if the first-
It may run a few minutes late, but better doing that at 7:30 than posting it for 8 o'clock, and then they're a quarter of eight, and everybody's aggravated because they're sitting in the room saying, why are we waiting 15 minutes for the hearing to start? So, so that's how it'll proceed. So, it's two separately posted meetings, for good reason. One was already advertised, and the second one could not fit in this venue, and therefore, you would have had a problem with the advertisement for 40B project for proper notice, so the advice of council was to leave it intact, and therefore, that's the two meetings, the two locations, which is perfectly legitimate. Both agendas have been posted in a timely manner, and as I think Representative Elliott noted earlier this evening, we expect that that will likely be the conclusion of the Ledge Road, that there'll be conclusion of the public hearing and likely a decision made on Wednesday evening.
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to mention that to anyone. So, the 243 Riverneck Road hearing will be here at 7, and then, anybody who's following the Ledge Road conversation and wants to attend the meeting, that'll be at the Senior Center at 7:30, or slightly after 7:30, depending.
But it actually works, because if you converge those two together here, or either there, it would be very crowded because there's heightened interest in both of those projects.
Is that all they're doing, is opening up the process?
Yeah, and they may declare safe harbor like they did with Crosby Village, and therefore, if the applicant chooses to continue, then my guess is they would likely continue the hearing. If not, if the applicant says no, we want you to make your decision, we'll appeal it, like what happened at Crosby Village, then that'll be the end. So, that's why it may only take 10 or 15 minutes.
Okay.
Because obviously, the applicant at 243 Riverneck Road, like Crosby Village, is notified in advance, you know, of what, so that information is out there.
Okay.
And obviously, the applicant 243 knew what happened at Crosby Village, and none of this is, is going to be of any surprise to them about the declaration of safe harbor.
Yeah. Okay.
It doesn't feel like they made a lot of changes on that project, do you know?
Okay, if nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Pat Maloney?
Aye.
Pat Rogers?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I'm an aye, and we're adjourned. Thank you.